Hello Erica.
Hello. Can you guys hear me?
We sure can. Are you in Delta or are you on vacation?
Uh, no, I'm homesick.
Oh, sorry to hear that.
Yeah, I was gonna come in, but um, I have a fever, uh, so I decided I shouldn't come in.
Thank you for not sharing.
I hope you feel better soon.
Yeah, the whole family's got it, so it's kind of brutal, but.
Um, is it possible to get those dates from, I don't know why this is.
Thank you.
Boreum, we have everyone here and Erica online. We'll do roll call in just a minute, but according to the agenda, we're gonna do an official proclamation about Arbor Day first. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and world, and trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious tops oil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Uh, now therefore I, Ben Baumfogt, Mayor of the Town of Carbondale, do hereby proclaim. Uh, what's the date? Then I'm, today is Arbor Day? May third, alright. I here, do hereby proclaim May third as Arbor Day in the town of Carbondale, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees that gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Hereby proclaimed. Okay, with that, we'll move on with roll call, please.
I'm here.
Here. Grubbs?
Here.
Eric?
Here.
Montemoure? Robison? Erhak?
Here.
Here.
We have a call? Great, thank you. Uh, first item is the consent agenda, which consists of approval of minutes from April eighth. Local license authority items, these are liquor licenses for modification of premises for Allegra and Bodigon to have their decks for the season. Always exciting to see those. Uh, and a dandelion day is a special, whatever we call that, um, special event, thank you, liquor license. Um, mosquito control intergovernmental agreement, accounts payable from April twenty-second, and approval of application to the Carbondale Public Arts Commission for Michelle Cook. Any questions or items to pull for discussion?
I, I just wanted to pull the accounts payable, I had a couple of, two quick questions, nothing controversial, but I just some clarification.
Okay.
On, two items there, should take two minutes.
Okay. Um, pulled the accounts payable, anything else? Alright, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus accounts payable. So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Colin, second by Jess, all in favor say aye.
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 Hey, um, Ross, your questions on accounts payable?
Um. Uh, just wanted to double check, and this is, when I see something, big numbers in here that I have a question about, I feel like maybe someone else in the public would as well. So, I just wanted to clarify the Carbondale Arts. It was worth every penny. Um, their economic development, that's large, is that largely for Mountain Fair?
Ted?
The thirty, thirty thousand dollars to Carbondale Arts.
Fifteen thousand of it is. Sorry, fifteen thousand dollars of it is their regular economic development money, and fifteen thousand is for First Friday.
Gotcha, thank you.
Um, and just to be clear, that economic development money is for the creative district, which is the economic development, sort of.
Great.
You know, through Carbondale Arts.
Um, and then the, uh, where was it? The thirty-seven thousand to land and shelter, uh, and maybe we'll get into this a little bit later, but I'm just curious about, that's, that's the architecture firm, and it says for aquatic center engineering, and I'm just curious maybe what that looked like and what that the use of the word engineering makes me believe that it's something maybe not this specific or.
Can you hold that for Wember?
Yeah.
Because I can't answer that very specifically right now.
Will do.
Thanks.
Anything else, Ross?
Nope, that's all. Thanks for the clarification on the, the creative arts.
Would you like to move to approve that with those, uh, questions answered?
Uh, yes, let's move that we approve the accounts payable portion of, uh, what is that?
That's fine, just.
Yeah, accounts payable, yeah, for April twenty-second.
I'll second.
So motion by Ross, second by Colin, all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Still has to wait. Uh, next on the agenda is public comment. Anybody here from the public who'd like to address the board? You can approach the podium and have three minutes? Anyone? Anybody online?
Yep.
Okay, moving on trustee comments. Anybody have comments since our last meeting? Meetings you've attended, things we need to know about?
Yep.
Uh, so as many of you might know, uh, the Mountain Valley Mobile Harm Park residents met on Friday at Third Street Center to discuss their next steps in trying to put together an offer, uh, to buy their park. Um, they have to create a cooperative, and they need eighty percent of their residents to, uh, say yes to that, so they're moving through that process. Um, there is a buyer for both parks, and there's been an offer made.
Wow.
Yeah.
I can speak to that also.
Okay, great. Uh, the good news is.
A competing offer, you're saying?
Uh, no, uh, just a, an offer. So what, the, the, the current residents don't have an offer in yet.
Yeah, so this is somebody else.
Yes. So, uh, the good news is that because of that offer, it has lowered the asking price for the Mountain Valley Mobile Harm Park from eighteen to fifteen point five. So, um, and because that whole process has happened, the timeframe, they have another one-twenty days. So we're looking at July, August before they have to confirm that they actually have an, an offer and they can make an offer to the current owners. But as I mentioned, because Christina was at that meeting on Thursday, uh, last Friday as well, there's no obligation for the current owners to accept any offer from the current residents, so we'll see. So Thistle Rock is working on the package, um, and I expect at some point they'll be in front of us for a discussion. So I just want to give you a heads up on that. Did you wanna jump in there, or does I have something else?
Um. Sure, it was gonna be part of my manager's report, but I can just fill in this piece right now. The, both the Aspen Basalt, um, uh, Mobile Home Park and Mountain Valley are working with Thistle Rock to form these cooperatives, resident-owned communities, if you see the word rock, that's what it stands for. The, uh, benefits of these, um, community structures are that they're not subject to market rate increases, and they don't have a profit margin. So although the lot rents will rise so that they can pay back whatever debt they end up having, they won't be subject to, um, investor costs, and somebody who's coming in, um, commercially, it gives them more control, gives them security against unfair eviction processes, et cetera. Our interest in that, in the Mountain Valley Park particularly, is because we have two units of employee housing there. So we were given notice, just like the rest of the residents. You know, keep in mind that Mountain Valley is not in Carbondale, but it bounds, um, on Carbondale. There are sixty-five kids that live in that park that go to Carbondale schools. The majority of the residents are Latino and work up valley. And, um, there are also meetings of all the local managers with West Mountain Regional Housing Coalition, some of the housing specialists, like So Mass has a housing, uh, director, and, um, Thistle Rock and some other people. There will probably be a financial ask, um, of the jurisdictions, what that will look like, and how the towns and the counties will be, um, how their funding, if granted, will be protected against any losses or is yet to be determined. But just, we will keep you posted on what's happening with that, because as Colin said, they're, they're gonna be in front of you at some point.
Funded against any losses, you mean, in terms of contributions we would make towards this?
Yeah, so that it, it, it might be looked at as an investment and not just a grant.
Uh-huh.
Right?
By, by us, you mean, or by the, by Thistle?
Uh, in the, in the legal sense.
Okay.
That it wouldn't just be a grant towards the purchase price, but if something ever happens, so that, um, the resident-owned community ever, um, dissolved, that there would be, um, some sort of mechanisms for the town to be repaid their investment.
Uh-huh, and so do we need to also make preparations essentially as two tenants of the park ourselves? Do we get essentially that level of representation in this coalition of?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
We're, we're, we're exempted from that membership, and we're allowed to stay in even though we're not resident occupied because we're a municipality.
Oh, so we're looked at as kind of like a landlord and.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and the, and the reason we're able to do that is we're not trying to, you know, make money, we're just trying to provide housing for current employees, and because we're a municipality, it's an exception, but everybody else will have to make sure it's a resident occupied, uh, park.
So would our employees then be able to take part, essentially, directly? No?
No, they don't have any direct interest except through us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, all the other, are there other intermediate, um, a lot of other intermediate actors like us, or is it otherwise mostly direct?
It's mostly us or people who, uh, live elsewhere and own a trailer and rent it.
Okay.
But there's not that many.
Subletted.
There's not that many, you do that. Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah.
And it sounds like these, are these meetings open to the public if people wanna come and?
They are probably up to a point, then it becomes member only.
Okay.
Especially when they get into the deals and the finances, so that on Friday, we were able to stay for a little while, and then they ask us to leave, so. Partially because they have a lot of decisions they have to make.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so there is a, like, a homeowners association or something?
Effectively.
Is a good structure for them to work on, okay.
Think of, it's a cooperative, but think of it as a NHOA that's really responsible for everything in the park.
Uh-huh.
They can hire property managers and set the rules of the park and those kinds of things.
Yeah.
Alright, so I'd say if anybody wants to know more, talk to Colin, sounds like he's right in the middle of it.
I want to.
Talk to Lauren, she's been attending these manager meetings. Um, other trustee comments? Ross, anything tonight? Christina?
Um, I just wanna say, um, I'm so happy the snow's melting and, um, spring's here. Um, busy, um, you know, baseball, lacrosse, whatever else is in spring. Um, I did go by the river from, um, um, park, 'cause now all the signs are up, so it's really nice. I would encourage everybody to go by there. Um, I did get a lot of, um, um, community, uh, people were telling me that they liked the yard service, um, that we had, um, you know, that, that's something that they really appreciate the community does. But I just want to ask, what's the difference between the spring cleanup and yard, does the yard, like what we had this past, this weekend to drop off branches and stuff, does that go on, like, all, sorry, I still get confused, I was looking for it on the calendar. Sorry.
It is a little confusing, because we have the spring and the fall and the summer, and they're all a little bit different.
So what you saw that started last Saturday will go every other weekend until September, through September. That is specifically for yard waste, small branches, garden waste, those sorts of things that can be taken to Picken County and composted. The event on May tenth is going to encompass, like, you could bring probably anything from your house that you didn't want anymore. It'll have e-waste, so people can bring phones, computers, that sort of stuff. We'll be recycling that behind Town Hall. We'll have general wa- waste that's just trash, that'll be across the street in the big lot. And then this year, instead of doing a spring and fall event, we're having hazardous waste as well, so you can bring anything that you shouldn't be throwing in the trash, herbicides, pesticides, paint, that sort of stuff, batteries, they're taking all that over there, and then tires will be over, I keep pointing over there. By Thunder River Theater. So it, it's gonna be kind of all one event. There is no yard waste accepted at that event, but every other week from now through September.
There is no charge for yarders?
No, as long as you're a resident of town, that's part of the fees we collect from our single hauler trash program, go to pay for that. And they do check, um, just in case anybody's watching that's not in-town limits, they check ID.
Great. And what day was that again? May tenth. Oh, so it's, it is dandelion day?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
That's kind of convenient.
Just in case anybody's paying attention, that, you're exactly right, Chris. And the parade for dandelion day, we have it in the public information that started going out, and will be going out from now until the event. It, Main Street's gonna be blocked up for a little bit, come early, come later, it can all work together.
Thanks Christine, anything else? And Colin, you had one more, you said after. Okay, any comments Jess? Chris?
Um, okay, I guess I'll do talking. Um, I, uh, just wanna mostly extend a huge thank you to everyone who participated in our spring membership drive, KDNK. We reached our goal of eighty-eight point one thousand dollars on time, and, uh, that was good. And we had a fun time doing it, had a lot of guests, and, um, I think it was fun, it was my first time sort of running it, but it's always a group effort, but, um, really thankful for everyone pitching in for that, but of course, for the public, it's never too late, or some of my fellow trustees, it's never too late to, uh, to become a member. And, uh, we will also be at dandelion day doing the beer garden, so that's a good place to come, say hello, and buy a t-shirt or something if you wanna. But also, dandelion day in general will be happening at May tenth, and, um, there's gonna be a parade, as mentioned, and there's gonna be hundreds of booths and speakers on stage, and I think an order of the dandelion award will be given out, and, uh, um, yeah, there's, it's, you know, burgeoning as ever, so, uh, of course, that's worth checking out, and you can bring your trash along down to town too, I guess. Um, and then I guess along the trash lines, the E-Board had a pretty good discussion la- last night about, um, Erica's proposal about the, um, about what to do with our surplus around the, and I, it did seem like they were landing more on, um, not event stuff, and I'm not sure if Erica had already talked about floated this idea or not, but sort of more on just expanding kind of what we were just talking about, maybe more of that yard waste kind of thing. Um, or, eh, either or, um, you know, sponsoring maybe the first month of people's personal collection or something, um, co-sponsoring it or something with Evergreen to get people at least, if they want to try out the idea of composting from home with the, with the, um, and, uh, so, but, um, and they also have, um, two members they're gonna forward to our, to our consideration, so it's getting revamped, I guess. And hopefully we'll have some contin- continuity, uh, you know, continuity going through, but, um, yeah. Uh, and then I guess I'll just, um, say, yeah, dandelion day is sort of our Earth Day, but of course, today is Earth Day, and, uh, so I just wanna thank Mother Earth for all of her bounty, and uh, the beautiful place we live in is just one corner of our earth, but I think it's, uh, always good to stop and think about being stewards of our, of our landscapes, and, uh, thinking about all of our different actions, and obviously, I think a lot of us are on the council as, you know, ways to try to move the needle on issues in, you know, pr- practical ways, um, around, you know, and we're gonna talk about B caps, so I think that's gonna be the perfect timing for it. But, you know, food, food, travel, and shelter, those are your sort of two places, three places you can always think about. Where am I using more than I need to, and how can I be less wasteful, so.
Alright, thanks Chris.
Yeah.
Erica, any comments?
Um, no, I don't have anything to add right now, thanks.
Okay. Uh, my only comment is I got an email inviting, um, Carbondale to participate in a process that's called the, it used to be called the Future Forest Roundtable, and they're gonna change their name, um, and they are, I printed it out. The goal is to convene a community discussion about how we can collectively understand, respond to, and take action against the multiple threats to our public lands and waters, and agencies and staff who manage, steward, and protect them. Uh, the framing is our community's response to the mass firings, and the defunding of public land management agencies should include both stewardship and advocacy. Meeting frequency is two to three times a year, and the first meeting of the new group will take place on Wednesday, May seventh, ten-thirty to one-thirty, uh, at the Third Street Center. So I am not, um, free to participate in that, so if anybody would like me to forward that to you so you could take a look at it, um, it's not something where we have to have participation, but I didn't wanna just assume that because I can't go, nobody else would wanna go, so I'll forward it to Ross. Anybody else wanna get that?
You could forward it to me, I'll look at it.
Okay. Um, and, we'll just go ahead and send that. And let me know if you have a hard time, I know I forwarded it, so you probably won't be able to respond right to the person, but if you can't get through or whatever, let me know, and I can do a reply and, and copy you on it. Great. Um, and then looking forward to a great Five Point Film Festival, and really appreciate all the work that Eric's teams and Kevin's teams and Chief Wilson's team, and there's a lot that goes into these big events when they come to a small town, whether it's Mountain Fair, um, Five Point, or just the First Friday, and really appreciate all the staff time that goes into that, as well as all the energy that comes into our town. I think Five Point is a great event, and, uh, couldn't happen without our support, so thanks for everybody that makes that happen. And we'll get to see our old friend Luis Ione's around, I'm sure. Former trustee.
Amen.
Okay, I think that wraps up our trustee comments. Mark, any attorney's comments this evening? Okay, he's back. How's he shooting? Okay, alright, well, we won't tell him you said that. Um, Lauren, uh, managers' comments?
Okay, I have a few things. Um, first, I just wanna thank Patrick for all his hard work, um, getting the Board and Commissions Open House going last week. I understand we had a pretty good turnout, and we have several, um, applications coming in. So hopefully we'll be able to fill out some of the vacancies on, on our boards and commissions. We do have a couple of boards who are, who have lost several people and really need to be, um, filled up. Second, I know I keep harping on this, but the CML Conference, the end of June, the room block at the event hotel is already full. That doesn't mean there isn't additional, um, lodging available in Breck, but, and there's also a waiting list for the main hotel, but please let us know if you would like to be registered and you need lodging. I think it's, it's a very valuable conference, and, um, you know, we certainly have money in the budget for, um, trustees to go if you want to.
Yeah, we just pause there for one second and definitely encourage, especially if you're new to the board, it is a great way to, like that training that we had, um, it's a lot of that kind of stuff. Um, but the networking that you get and the kind of camaraderie that you build where you sit in a room and they're doing a presentation on some issue that we're really working hard on and we keep feeling like we're not doing enough, we're not, and everybody in the room is feeling the same way. And they're talking about the best practices and we're doing them and there's a lot of value and just kind of, kind of gives you a sense of context for where we are in all these different challenges and, and the, um, yeah, the networking and everything is really strong. So I would really encourage you to go, even if you can only go for a day. Try to make it happen. It, it flip flops every other year between Breck and Ridge generally and Loveland. And no offense to Loveland, but much rather go to Breck in the middle of summer. Loveland is one of those windowless conference centers that you go in and it's like going into a casino and it's like, go, go to Breck. So go this year.
On very few, ma- many fewer people attend at least from the Western Slope, um, when it's in Loveland than in Breck.
Lauren, can you remind, remind us of the dates?
I think it's the twenty-fourth through the twenty-seventh of June.
Okay, twenty-fourth to twenty-seventh of June, okay.
I think so, but I'll, I'll look and if I'm wrong, I'll tell you before the meeting's over.
Yeah, and even just if you just Google CML, you'll find it. It's, it's widely out there. I thought it was, yeah, that's right. That's what I had on my calendar.
Okay, perfect.
Um, a reminder trustee tour of town facilities Friday morning. Um, if you could be here just slightly prior to eight AM, we'll try to get going right at eight. Um, if you cannot attend, and I think we only have two that cannot attend, um, Ben and Jess. Um, we will try to recreate this for trustees that can't attend. I can't guarantee that we'll see all the same things for both uh, groups, but, um, you know, we're looking forward to that and hopefully it'll be valuable to you. Um, next, I have good news and bad news on the staffing, um, uh, side of things. Um, first, I need to tell you that, um, Greg Hanson, our finance director, will be leaving us. Um, end of next week, um, he will be missed. And, um, we also have a new rec center, um, director. Robin Jacober has been hired and she started yesterday. And, um, she got at least a little bit of a chance to talk to Margaret before Margaret made her rounds today and said goodbye to everybody and she's on her way to New Zealand. Um, and then lastly, just so that you know, as a follow-up to the building code adoption, uh, GCE and Clear are hosting two workshops, um, one the end of April and one early May. Um, if you're interested or you know of anybody you think might be interested in these, one is a workshop on energy codes, uh, the new energy codes for both residential and commercial, um, buildings. And the other one is a heat pump retrofit training for HVAC contractors. Um, so there's a lot of activity going on with regard to not only updating people on new code requirements, but also on, um, some of our environmental, um, initiatives. That's all I have.
Great. Thanks, Lauren. Um, moving on then to action items. First item on the agenda is Lions Plaza Right-of-Way lease renewal. Kevin?
Exciting stuff. And those of you who did see the email that Ross sent out, those are accurate pictures of that area. Thanks for doing that. Before we start into this, the town manager position closes next Friday, right?
This Friday.
This Friday, okay. So because I like to be first, I'd like to welcome the new town manager to Carbondale. Because I'm sure they will probably either be watching or the meeting at some point in time. So anyway, anyway. Onto the Lions Plaza lease. Uh, as I said in the memo, uh, this lease has existed since nineteen ninety-six. Um, to the best of my knowledge, it was probably an arrangement that was made with the town as part of the development to do that, to accommodate the parking. I don't think this was some sort of encroachment that just happened. Um, it was renewed in two thousand eighteen or two thousand eight, expired in two thousand eighteen and we've been working diligently to get a new one in place. So what's in front of you now is basically bumping the rent up a hundred dollars from what it was in the two thousand eight, two thousand eighteen timeframe, which is a hundred dollars more than it was from ninety-six to two thousand eight. The biggest difference and i- is that this is actually a thirty-year lease because these things tend to get lost in the shuffle. And I think the longer term, it doesn't, you know, it, it doesn't change our ability to go in there with thirty days notice and use the right of way for anything we want to. But I think just from a record-keeping standpoint, it seemed, uh, more appropriate, at least to staff and to the association to just do a longer lease. So we weren't having to remember to do it every ten years. The last thing I'll say is they, even, even though the lease expired in two thousand eighteen, they have continued to pay in their current on their payments for even those interim years. So with that, if there's any questions, happy to answer them.
Okay, questions? Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, this seems fine. Uh, does, do we have a similar potential scenario going east and west? Like, I'm just trying to understand if it's just this area that gets encroached. So if, if the parcel next to this ever got developed, do we potentially have a similar scenario that could happen?
I would highly encourage the board at that time, if I'm still here, to require that all of the necessary improvements for the development beyond the property and not use public property.
Okay, okay.
Um, I, I think there's ways around it just by knowing, i- if they know upfront, no, you can't use
Yeah.
ten feet of our right of way to accommodate your parking, then they can do that. And, and I can't speak to why this happened the way it did, but.
I think it had something to do with it being residential and turning into commercial or vice versa. And the parking kind of changed because the parcel right next to it, I think was supposed to be commercial and it became residential. And that might have impacted things. So I'm, I'm fine with this. Thanks.
Ross, is there a question?
A couple, a couple of quick questions. I mean, certainly looking at, um, the fee in nineteen ninety-eight versus the fee now, we're not, we're not keeping up with inflation. I don't know that we should. I don't know that's necessary. Um, and, but, but I am, I just want to do, do want to make clear that there's no, there's no one being charged for parking there, is there? Do we, do we know that there's, it's, it's own, it's ownership units mostly and, and that's, okay.
So your question, it's more is, is the HOA charging people to park on the right of way?
Okay.
Is that what you're asking?
Well, no, I mean, there's no, there's no separate owners or, or businesses charging, charging anyone as part of their lease agreement for parking, for parking situation there. In which case we're ba- you know, they, they, we're, we're basically giving them a twenty-five dollar a month parking deal. Um, for, you know, if, if they're, they're, they're charging a hundred bucks to their tenants or something, I, I want to make sure that we're not, we're not, um, giving this sort of fiscal gift.
I am not aware of that situation, but I could not say a hundred percent for certain that that's not happening, but I have not heard that that's happening over there.
I- is there any argument for, for a change that's more commensurate with uh, inflation or not?
You know, the way we have typically handled right-of-way leases in town have, have been more, I would say, token acknowledgements that people are using the public right-of-way for a private purpose versus to try to generate revenue.
Fair enough.
But that's not my decision to make.
I, I don't have, I don't have any problems with it. I just, I wanted to ask a few questions.
Any other questions for Kevin on this one? I appreciate the fact that, um, it's longer term so that it doesn't get forgotten, but also that we maintain this thirty-day ability to terminate. Like if we decided we're gonna redevelop that part of Main Street and we need on-street parking, we could terminate it. It would throw their little development into some form of chaos and we'd need to work with them on that. But, um, I appreciate that we're not at a disadvantage by having a really long term.
Yeah, and as, as, I visited with Jared a little bit about this too, because this is kind of required right now. But as more of those units, they seem to be converting from commercial to residential over there. That actually lessens the need for parking there. So I, I think it's going in the right direction that we wouldn't really be posing the situation if we decided to use it.
Okay. The one, one issue over there that I, that I do foresee is that that's a very, um, narrow sidewalk, that whole, that whole strip, but it's also, but it's actually where people would prefer, if you're trying to bike out or try to, even trying to walk out of town, sort of in that direction towards the, uh, towards CRMS, um, because the, the way, the, the development across the way, you know, is in various states of repair, disrepair or boxes. Um, we, you know, we're unclear, I'm unclear exactly about what the plan is for that, for that bike path sort of zone over there. But for right now, if you're on, on wheels, your easier bet is, is to be on that, what is a very narrow sidewalk with some pretty tight, um, tight turning, turning onto, uh, Main Street with, um, with some, some structures blocking. You, so, so it, I could see that being probably the bigger issue if at some point the town decides that we want to have that be a wider sidewalk. We should keep that in mind.
Stay tuned for some tactical urbanism coming around this summer to West Main Street near you.
All right. Sounds good.
Hey, any other questions on this item? Um, is this, it's not a public hearing, so I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve and authorize the mayor to execute the right-of-way lease with the Lions Plaza Condominium Association.
Second. Motion by Jess, second by Ross. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Uh, next item, thank you, Kevin. Um, next item is the Aquatics Center Construction Update from Wimber.
Hi. Hi, good evening. Um, so my name is Tammy Tucker. I'm new to Wimber. Um, I know at the last meeting, um, they talked about I would be joining Wimber and joining this project and I'm super excited to be here. Uh, want to thank you for inviting us to come back and share, uh, making time on our agenda and give us a chance to share, um, how we can update the budget and, um, most specifically the contingency tracking to help clarify, um, some of that information for you guys and get it in a way that kind of works for you. Um.
And Tammy, I might just pause there. Thank you for joining us and, and welcome to the team. Um, seems like the goal tonight, because this is a pretty quick turnaround from our last check-in, is to, you're showing us a draft of what these might look like in the future and you're looking for feedback on that. And then we'll start to see a more consistent format. Is that basically what you're hoping for tonight?
Um, that was specifically what I was going to suggest, that our goal in coming back tonight was on a quick turnaround to share that proposed draft, um, that we submitted an example of in that report. And to talk about feedback and, um, answering any of the questions. Also, um, to clarify our understanding of the procurement policy and make sure that that's inserted into the project process, um, moving forward.
Great. So do you want to share anything with us or do you just want us to just dive in? I don't know if Eric has anything to add? How do you guys want to proceed?
So I'm here just to kind of give you an update on, uh, capital campaign if, if needed, so.
Okay. Um, so Tammy, is there anything you wanted to highlight on the updated report before we dive into some questions? I know Colin had some questions and I think probably all of us did about just some of the funding sources, because we've had a lot of long discussions and, and hard decisions about funding and felt like we had a pretty clear, um, kind of decision history there. And it, it's hard to track that in, in this and, and in everything that we've seen so far. Um, so I don't know if we want to start there, if you wanted to walk us through anything or how you want to.
I can walk through a couple of things that I've picked up on, on, from the documents that I've reviewed, which is a lot, and looked at on the conversations that have been had and gleaned from some of the questions that Colin sent in this afternoon. Um, so some of the, um, talking points that I kind of pulled together and thought might be relevant as, um, probably redundant, but a little bit of a, um, foundation for the conversation. Um, there was some question about the GMP. Um, and so there is a GMP and anytime, um, the, the GMP is the construction project budget. The project budget is more than the GMP. The GMP is what the, um, construction contractor agreed to build the, um, facility for, but obviously there's more costs that are in the total project budget, which are some of the things that, um, you see coming out. Um, the change orders, anytime a change order is approved, will increase that GMP. So that's what you see with money moving from the owner's contingency with approval of a change order or agreement to make a change, moving that money into the con- the construction budget and then increasing that GMP. Um, so that might help with some of the conversation that I saw over time about the GMP changing. Um, that, that has in fact happened with some of the changes that were agreed to. Um, the contingency log then represents those changes that were agreed to and, um, captures the impact on the contingency fund. And you do see credits and debits in that account, particularly because at this point in the project, there was a value engineering, um, change order that was approved that then moved money in. And then there was the, um, amendment to the GMP prior to that change order that also changed the total project cost. So you've seen some, you've seen some balancing and in the, um, revised contingency log that we proposed for the report this month consolidated a lot of that. So it took out a lot of the minutia of, um, just, you know, checkbook transactions type of things to kind of, um, put those together and focus on the decisions that were made, um, rather than the line item adjustments that needed to be made as a result of the decisions. Um, so those are some of the rationale that, um, I took to the revision and the, um, new report that we put, put in there for you to look at. Um, the other piece is incorporating some of the, um, pending decisions. Some of those things that have been talked about or are being talked about but haven't been approved and showing that potential impact on the contingency budget and the overall project budget, um, if they move through to a complete approval. And that speaks to some of the ad alternates that were, um, decided on, I think in December tenth, I believe. Um, and so I pulled those out to be able to illustrate the status of those four items. And some have been approved. Uh, one is just about ready for approval. And then one does not quite have, um, enough information to propose a hard cost associated with it. Um, but as those decisions are made, they will, um, be moved forward based on the procurement policy at the dollar level. Um, and according to, um, the motion to approve that the board previously made for those items.
Okay.
Yeah. And then I think the, um, funding conversation, um, and it sounds like some of that stems from the capital campaign. And, um, the understanding from the project team that a decision to increase the capital campaign on resulted in an increase to the project budget. And that's how that was interpreted to the best of my knowledge from the information that I've reviewed. And, um, we'll look forward to hearing your feedback on that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, should we maybe just look at that first chart together then, the one that says financials on page one of the memo? And, and ask our questions there. I mean, I think where some of us are a little bit, um, confused or, uh, unclear, um, is the use you mentioned, Tammy, there of the fundraising goal. Because what we stated, I think pretty clearly in all those motions and discussions was, and, and Eric and Lauren and everybody were here to help make sure we're remembering this the same, is that the project is fully funded from a combination of the, the bond and a, um, transfer from the general fund and reserves from our recreation sales and use tax fund. And we're trying to not dip so deep into those reserves through the fundraising. So I think what's confusing to us is when we see both of those numbers on here separate, when really in my mind, it's been, well, project's fully funded out of these sources and then it'll just be supplanted, right? Like we'll use, we'll use fundraising or grants instead of one of those, but not in addition to those. So could you, could you help us with the table there? When we see the fundraising goal of one point six million and then it came down to nine, or then added another nine hundred thousand, it's got it at two point five. That is our fundraising goal, but where I'm a little lost is the general fund contribution and, uh, real estate, sales and use tax fund, um, being there in addition to that.
So reading through and tracking the information, um, that was available, the wha- what I saw the project team interpret was that nine hundred thousand dollar increase was, um, attributed to the budget. I did not find a motion from the board that, um, officially moved that to increase the project budget. And so if there's discussion, if that was a mistake or that was errantly applied, um, then that's certainly a correction that we can make and, um, wanna have that understanding from you guys. Um, there is some, uh, impact on the contingency budget and decisions that have been made or would be about to be made that might need to be rebalanced if, um, all of that nine hundred thousand is removed from the budget, from the project budget.
Other, I mean, I think this is a pretty important topic and I'd welcome any staff input on this one as well. I mean, I think Eric, we wanna keep you in your staff role and keep Wimber in their owner's rep role as much as we can, but since, you know, you were here and helped us through those, I'd welcome any input on kind of how we're remembering that and how we're tracking.
And I do wanna be clear that we're not in a position to make decisions about how much funding you provide to the budget.
Yeah.
We're in a position where we wanna, um, accept and understand how much money you're providing to fund the budget and work within that. Um, so collectively, it appears there may have been some misunderstanding about how that nine hundred thousand, um, should be applied to the project or if it should be applied to the project, and I think that's an important understanding to gain, uh, so that we do have that information of what the town is contributing and what we should be managing the project to.
Okay. Any other thoughts from either staff or board members to help us get clarity on this item?
I have the same questions. I mean, my, it doesn't make sense to me. That wasn't my understanding. I, I, I vividly remember you saying, so the project is fully funded with what we just talked about, and I, I'm confused as to how we got from a fully funded project without that nine hundred thousand to a project that now requires the nine hundred thousand dollars to fund the project. So what happened in the budget? Where we are now, I mean, from what I can tell, if we take that nine hundred thousand dollars off the full budget, we have nothing left in the contingency.
Lynn, can you help us out?
Sorry, I may be reading this wrong, but, um, Eric, you can correct me if, if I'm mistaken, but when we went to the two point five million on our fundraising goal, that was so that we can include all of the play elements and the extra trellis and the solar and all of the ad alternates. When the board approved that, the two point five should have been sufficient. It's not an additional nine hundred thousand in the budget necessarily. It's just that the fundraising goal went up. The board also approved taking, if we didn't meet that two point five million, the board approved taking the, uh, gap out of, um, other funds. So that we took what we had already fundraised, which is what now Eric? A million six fifty or something like that? Yep. And we still have almost nine hundred thousand to raise, but that money is covered. So even though it's a fundraising goal, it doesn't change our budget. It's just where is that money coming from? And so I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, board, that having the owner funding include a line item that is fundraising goal is confusing, because it should just be part of the budget. And we can say, you know, where is it coming from? It's going to come from these sources, but if we fundraise more money, then we can trade some of that money for, from one place to another.
So, um, two, two things, thank you. I think that's very helpful.
Is that how you remember it?
Yeah.
So, so two things, we typically wouldn't show detail on funding sources for owner funding, but that was done historically in this project, and so I wasn't about to remove that. I think it's informative and it certainly did help me gain a better understanding of the project. Um, but if you look at that line then, is the thirteen million, four hundred nineteen thousand, five hundred seventy-two dollars the correct amount to fund the project?
Off the top of my head, I cannot.
That would be the question of the day, because to, to your point, whether that nine hundred thousand is coming from the fundraising goal or from another town budget line, um, what we're interested in is, do we have thirteen million, four hundred nineteen thousand, five hundred seventy-two dollars to spend on this project?
Well, that should be a pretty easy dig into first thing in the morning when we have all that documentation.
Yeah, I think that's good.
But to have it be a fundraising line in here got really confusing.
It would be great to honestly pull that detail out, because we should not be trying to represent the town's budget in the project budget. We should just be showing this owner funding line, the bolded line as the totals. And, um, the, the town would then track how their, what, what fund sources they're using to pull into that. Um, that's, that's a level of detail that, and sometimes you move money from one line to another or whatever might happen, and we're not privy to that information. Uh, but we do need to stay within the project budget and the funds that you're making available to do that.
So it sounds like that'd be a really important update next time, is that maybe our staff is responsible for the town funding table and Wimber is responsible for the project budget and how it's being spent and tracked. And our staff can get clear on these questions. It sounds like maybe not in real time right now, um, but by the next update that we see.
I guess my question then is, so this thirteen million dollars is a real, that's the real project budget number now? You've gone up one point seven million dollars.
Yes, um, now the nine hundred thousand, and I wanna address that because you commented on, well, the project is dependent on nine hundred thousand. It's not dependent on nine hundred thousand to balance the budget, um, but it is dependent on an amount to cover the ad alternates and, um, I have those, some of those numbers, um, I have to find it, um, but it's not the full nine hundred thousand that's already spent. Um, a contingency budget is important for a project. Um, the risk decreases at this point in the project when we're out of the ground and we're moving into structural. We're, we're less exposed to unexpected circumstances that we would have to fund because we discovered something um, as we began work that needed to be addressed. Um, those things are typically below ground. And when we move above ground, we start to have more, um, discretion in the things we choose to spend contingency dollars on. So we're in a safer spot at this point to, um, let the contingency budget decrease to something. Um, decreasing it to zero at this point is, is a little, a little unsettling. Um, you've made some decisions about ad alternates and, um, some things that are being looked into that don't have costs associated yet, so the decisions aren't made. The decision to consider adding them into the project has been made. And the final decision would be made based on the costs that come back and the availability of remaining contingency dollars. Um, so the more we can put into that contingency budget, uh, the better the, um, rec team has to achieve their goals and add some of these elements into the project that they're looking to add in, like, like lights and, um, cameras and some of those kinds of things.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's a pretty easy solve tomorrow to do the math with, um, with Wimber. Oh, hello.
Quick, quick question.
You were gonna be online, looking for you.
No, yeah, I appreciate you guys inviting us back, but I was double booked. I had to solve council as well.
Okay, I think Colin and Ross.
I just did a quick question on your last sentence there, but my, my sense is that we aren't using that, that contingency dollars wouldn't be used for lights and little things around the edges, because, because those things are not things that, that we are, are unanticipated at any point. Um, and so that, I mean, that was the last thing you said and that just perked my ears up, cause I don't, I don't feel like those are contingencies. That's our contingency pot of dollars is not for things that would be nice towards the end. And that's certainly not how I anticipate a contingency. Contingency is, oh crap, there's a big boulder that we have to remove and we didn't anticipate that and couldn't have reasonably, you know, anticipated that. So can you clarify that a little bit?
Yeah, and it can be, um, at your discretion. So true, contingency is for things like you're digging down, you come across a huge boulder, you didn't anticipate being there, it needs to be mitigated. Um, contingency is also for a change in scope. So if the team, the town decides that they want to add something to the project that they previously chose not to include in the project. So you went to the construction company and you said, hey, we want you to build this. And as the project moves along, maybe the project team, the rec team gets an idea and says, oh, this would be really great to add into this project at this time. This is the right time to do it. And we have some money in this contingency budget. Do we want to approve that change order, that change in scope of work, which would then increase the GMP? And add that to the project?
I, I just wanna be clear, as, as the town board, we, we, I, I mean, my understanding is that we are the ones that should be making those decisions of dipping into contingency funds. And, and I want to be, I, I would prefer to be the one doing that, not, um, you know, not, not sort of a, 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 a thousand small change orders or thousand smalls, yeah, sure, why not? We can get the better this or the better that or the lights or something like that. You know, we've, we've sort of put a ceiling on this with an understanding that contingency is in case something goes wrong. Um, and, and if there's a different understanding or we need to redefine that, then let's do that now. Um, because I, I don't think, I don't think most of us are comfortable with, um, with, with additions beyond the very significant additions that we've approved, um, at this point. And so I know that's, to some extent, that's not your, not, not your role. I guess, you know, that's sort of on this side. But I guess the question is who, you know, who signs off on that and how, how, how do we, you know, proceed a- along those lines? Eric, do you have a different understanding of how, how some of that works?
Um, well, I don't want you guys to think that we are, sorry. I don't want you to think that those decisions are being made in a vacuum. It's been made by a team that we hired and, and trust to do the, do the right thing for the project. We do have one chance to build this right. And so those decisions are being made with knowledge and, and review and, and expert, expert in the field, so. I just don't want to feel like I'm making those decisions. I'm not making those decisions. I'm using the entire team, you know, through many, many meetings to, to look at what's, what we need for the project, not what we want, what we need. We got one chance to do it right. And, and so a lot of those decisions, like the lights and the security cameras, those are safety issues that have been brought to us from, um, you know, from Brian and from other people that have run pools before that took a look at the security measures of the project and said, hey, we're missing a lot here, you know, we need to fix this before we build this, so.
Let's see a few more responses, Lauren.
Uh, I just wanted to make a, we had the conversation about what is the word contingency mean? At our last meeting, though, I'm sorry you weren't at, but, um, but that I think is that was the conversation that we had last time is that, that that money is there for sort of emergencies. And if there's something that, and I say emergency, I don't mean it quite as, you know, as seriously as that, but for things that were, you know, unexpected costs to do the things that were already agreed upon. Um, so I, I don't know if there's another word we can use for some of the other stuff, but I think that that's where it sort of gets lost in translation.
Totally appreciate that. Um, I think the first place to, um, gain your understanding of the approach is to understand the town procurement policy. And through that purchase policy, you've empowered certain employees, certain staff within, um, the town to make decisions at certain levels. And as part of the contract that you execute, um, there's usually a contract policy as part of the procurement policy that empowers staff to make educated, informed decisions based on their expertise that they've been hired to perform for the town. And so then from there, those responsibilities of how they execute that is at the board direction. And then we partner with staff to make sure we understand those requirements and that we're compliant with how we help manage the project and the project, project budget accordingly. Um, to the things that I've seen, um, such as specifically the, the safety lighting that's being discussed, it's a really common type of element that would be paid for out of contingency associated with a project like this. Uh, for whatever reason, um, the amount of lighting was either not, um, included at the level that now seems apparent and necessary, or it was excluded for another reason that I'm not totally privy to at this moment, but those kinds of decisions are very typical through these kinds of processes. And, um, Eric with his resources and his staff and then the people that they're associating with that are telling them and they're, you know, educated about the they've got, they've got all kinds of consultants on the project that are helping understand what, what should be the base level of safety standards, um, for this project. And they're recommending that that might be something that could be improved. And like Eric said, you've got one chance to do some of these things. Some things can be added later. Um, some things kind of go in the ground or need to be built in to really be done correctly. And if there's an opportunity to do that, we wanna explore it and leave you with the best project that we can possibly leave you with within the allocated budget funds, so the project funds, and those contingency dollars are part of those total project funds um, that are available within the procurement policy and the decisions that should be made to finish the project.
Thank you for those explanations. I mean, I, I think we do have to be careful to stay in our board role, um, and not get into a situation where we're sort of micromanaging every change order and, you know, like we don't meet for three weeks after tonight and things may come up that need pretty quick decisions and um, projects where I've been involved in, sitting in sort of Eric's seat, a lot of stuff comes up that doesn't come to the board level. Um, so our procurement policy says things over a hundred thousand dollars would come to our level, but other than that, we are entrusting Eric and the staff and with the owner's rep and everybody else's advice to make decisions like that within that contingency budget to kind of keep the project on track. So I am comfortable with that and I take the contingency to mean both things, sort of the things that we didn't expect and that are sort of emergencies, but also things we didn't expect that are like, it was left out of the scope. It was a miss. It's under a hundred thousand dollars. We've made a concerted effort to research it. We're moving forward with it. And then we get a record of those. I think if it's a major change in direction, that's different and you would come to us with that. But I wanna make sure that we're all comfortable with that, that that's what's gonna keep happening moving forward. And that's very common project management.
Oh, absolutely. I wanna emphasize what Ben just said. And couch my comments in the sense of understanding. Um, we're on our third, arguably fourth representative from Wimber, unfortunately. And, um, through January, February, March, we had been sharing that we didn't really like the reports. They were confusing. We're, we're in understanding. So all of our comments, mine in particular, are all trying to understand where we are. So we can tell the larger public, this is a good project. We're, we're keeping tabs on this. Um, so all my questions were more around, how did we get there? Like so? I went back into the reports over the last few months, um, and they're all, the numbers are all kind of the same. Then we get to April and all of a sudden we go from two, four, and five million dollar project to three point four million dollar project. And I go, okay, what, what happened? And I can't tell in the report what happened, so that's something I'd really love some help with. Um, as we move forward, like what, how did we go? It was roughly the same. In March, we had the issue of the change order that was over three hundred thousand dollars, raised a lot of issues, concerns, understanding. Um, and I think, uh, just trying to understand, um, okay, we may have phrased our fundraising goal, but to Lauren's point, I didn't expect that was in the budget. Because when I look at the bottom line, it looks like we're kind of in the same boat we were like a year ago. We're now, we're one point six million dollars short and we have to keep fundraising, which is why we did fundraising. So I'm like, what's going on? I don't get it. Um, the other thing that was really kind of odd and I didn't quite remember is I know in December when we, uh, had the discussion about the reserve funds and moving some back to our general fund and the different options, we, we chose one where we split the difference. And one of the reasons we did that is we were really concerned about the fund balance and they're, uh, going below eighty percent, our guide. Well, it looks like now it's, it's at fifteen, it's twice what we were, eight hundred thousand dollars more than what we had approved in December. I don't know how, what that process was to get us there. I'm not saying that it's not needed, but I think one of the things we kind of really are debating in this is how do we make sure we get the project built and it has enough resources? But we also have these other priorities that we're trying to fill and we can't spend rec money on those other priorities. So if we can get money in, back into our, uh, reserve fund, that's all to the good. But, you know, you, you had, you know, remember the conversation, are you willing to go below eighty? And you said, no, I'm not comfortable with that. So we ended up with only seven hundred thousand, but now if you look at this budget, it's one point five. Just trying to, so I think from our perspective, we're all really supportive of the project. We want a great end product, but because of all these changes, we're confused. And we'd just like to get some more clarity about how these decisions were made. How do we, how do we, uh, share how the cost increases have happened? I get it, things get more expensive, but that's, that's kind of the context for what I sent you.
I'm sorry, can I just thank you for that Colin, because that's just. I'm sorry, can I just thank you for that, Colin, because that just reminded me of what happened in December. So when it was one point six out of the uh general fund and the board wanted to put half of that back into to to come out of rec sales and use tax fund, that was done, so that's eight hundred of the one point five. And then the other seven hundred was if we don't raise the amount of money that we need, the two point five million, that extra seven hundred would come out of rec sales and use tax fund, so that's the million five. So that's where those two numbers added up. The eight hundred that was coming out of rec sales and use tax that was changed in December and then this contingent backup plan of seven hundred thousand. That's really not real yet because we don't know what the fundraising goal is gonna have happen. But that that's where that number came from.
Well, it'd be just great if we could organize this better, so it's very clear.
And this is the first time I'm meeting our new representative, so we will talk.
So I think to Ben's comment.
Yep.
We want this to work, we're really supportive. But because of all the changes, it's been, and and the process to try and get to the change, um, we just are like, help us, help us understand where this is going.
Yeah, I I appreciate the articulation of um your understanding of the track and your understanding. And I think that speaks to why we also don't typically show that detail, but we do verify the total fund number so that you can work on where the money is coming from and we can make sure we've got an accurate number in that final box. And it sounds like we can collaborate this week to um finalize that amount and then come back with a better understanding of the total available funds and the impact on approved contingency items and potential contingency items and then know exactly where we're at.
I see, Jess has a hand up and so does Eric online, so Jess and then Eric.
I just have a quick question on the contingency log that on page two. It says three thirty-one twenty twenty-five mounted PV array, PCO eight, PCO eight plumbed aquatic play elements is eight hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Is that, where is the rest of that money? Because we're showing above in the approved adults for those two items, it's three ninety-four, six ninety-five and uh sixty-four thousand.
The um, that line includes change order two, which was uh three hundred fifty-four thousand plus for um secondary revisions um prior to a while back um that were approved to the um construction project. And then uh change order three, which was those two items, the trellis and and mounted AV array and the plumbed aquatics elements, which was four hundred fifty-eight thousand plus, um that totals eight twenty-six. And um it would be nice for us to be able to itemize each of those um to provide that additional clarity and break them out. Uh, we'll try not to lump things together, it sounds like that detail will be better.
Does that answer your question, Jess?
For now, yeah.
Okay, Erica?
What's the solar from?
Um, thank you and uh thanks, Tammy, welcome to the team. Um, I think this is a good step in the right direction. Um, my question is actually similar to Jess's on that line because I feel like where this additional nine hundred thousand is coming from when we approved the adult budgets and what we approved at the end of twenty twenty-four um to include those in the budget and the GMP and then it, so I'm just wondering maybe as we get more detailed and one of the follow-ups is just to make sure we're not double counting those somewhere.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So we can work on um breaking out that line and um providing that clarity on what that eight hundred twenty-six thousand dollars is. There's, it's a little unclear, but I think it could be more clear in the description there and we can certainly do that.
But and I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this contingency log correctly. If if we remove the nine hundred thousand dollar budget increase, there's essentially no contingency left, is that correct?
Yeah.
It's like twenty thousand dollars.
Correct. So to fund the um items that have kind of been approved or in the process of being approved, um, you would want to look at being able to fund that at at four hundred forty-some thousand dollars, four hundred forty-three thousand dollars, somewhere in that ballpark um to cover the items that you've talked about. But decisions can be made and that is at the board's discretion on how much funding you're providing for the project. And that's um then what we work with to make decisions that are informed based on the available funding.
I just think there's, I think we need another, like, this is a feedback session, right? And I think I don't want to get us into decision making, right?
I'm not asking.
Yeah, but I I would be very concerned, Jess, if I thought that if we remove nine hundred thousand dollars and hoped for um fundraising, that we're at like a negative contingency.
That's essentially what it's saying, right?
I'm I'm just gonna wait and see because I think the staff version of where our funding is coming from adds up to a total number that covers the whole project. That is what we've been operating under this whole time. And that everything that we've approved, the the adults, the whole thing will be covered, the contingency will be included within that. And then if we can get clarity on that, where our staff comes up with, here's how we funded it and Wember comes up with, here's how we're spending it, I think we'll be okay.
Yeah, I just, I would like to have a better understanding, and I think this is from staff. Be where the funding is coming from, but when that happened in the process, like what, when did we approve that funding? Because there was a lot of meetings at the end of the year last year where we were talking about the budget and then that we were talking about the pool budget and we were talking about the overall town budget. And so I would like to just have a really clear understanding of when we approved what and how we got there so that when we are all sitting here and we're looking at these reports, we're clear, crystal clear that that we approved all of these additional funding. And I'm nervous looking at this. So I just want to express that I'm 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 nervous. Um, and I I do understand this stuff in in the world.
Yeah.
So I really appreciate your efforts, I'm really glad you're here in front of us and um here to explain this because it's been sort of a disappointing process with the changes. And so I I appreciate your efforts tonight.
I appreciate that, I'm happy to be here. Um, it's the part of the project that I like the most is making sure that we can be transparent and meaningful. And this feedback is really helpful to us understanding how we can um illustrate and represent this budget so that we can hopefully have a tool that's more meaningful moving forward. Um, so we'll certainly work in between now and the next meeting and um be sure to provide a similar clear representation and be willing to adjust and adapt if we need to. So we'll keep working on it until we get it right and make sure that you guys feel good about the information that you're seeing in the project process.
Word out for the next time that they come, Ross.
I I um, as I'm looking through this, I I I recognize features that we approved. And the one thing that that I feel is missing, and and again, this 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 may just be someone needs to hunt it down and figure out exactly when we said yes. Um, I don't see the the spa pull or pulled out here at any or called out at any point. And so I I and I remember when our first uh member uh representative was here, I asked sort of specifically for for actually a little bit of a breakdown of that. I'm not as interested in the breakdown, although it wouldn't be, I think it'd be informative. But I know that's, you know, that was one one element that there was some concern about. Um, and I don't see it in here, I'd like to know what that's costing. And um I think I think we should all know that, what that's costing and and sort of at what point that was sort of roped into the like the cost, because I don't, I don't see it here.
Okay.
Thank you, much appreciated.
Yeah, Jess.
Just one more piece of feedback, sorry, Chris. Um, the, I would really like to understand, I know we're out of the ground and we're through a lot of the risk that happens in excavation, I understand that. But the the risk analysis that we've gotten in the Wember reports has been sort of lacking. So I would, I would really like to understand where you guys see, like, is there something that might be coming down down the pike? And I know that there's pending change orders and things you guys are looking at, but those all look to me like added scope. And so is there someplace where where we may run into an issue where we missed something like the winter protection allowance? And and or if if we're worried about the tariffs or if we're worried about, like, are there any big things that we should be paying attention to going into the summer as we close this project out? Because at this point, we're headed into finishing the project. So I think a a more thorough risk analysis would be helpful.
Can I say that really quick? Do you mind if I?
Yes.
Funny, we had this conversation earlier, but you're right. I mean, getting out of the ground is the most risk in a new build. Um, getting into the walls is equal risk in a renovation. Fortunately, we're not doing a renovation for many reasons, because renovations are awful. But moving forward, um, my assessment, knowing where we're at, historical precedent says we have very low risk for new construction, A, everything's bought out, everything is subcontracted, you know, materials are purchased, shop drawings are in place, finishes, we have a mock-up to do, that's it, we're moving forward. Um, there is always risk, but there is very low risk moving forward with the exception of scope additions. But we mitigate it by not taking advantage of the scope additions.
Of course.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm glad to hear that. I, you know, we also have things going back to the building department and I just want us to be cautious of what that means too, if we're sending things back to the building department and change ordering the design, that costs money. And so as much as we cannot do that, that also helps us not have added cost, so.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I I think it's worth mentioning, trustee Rob said that, you know, going back to the design, a lot of that was, a lot of the design changes were generated via RFIs, like request or information, hey, this detail is lacking. We need a bit more uh study of the constructability on this assembly or this, you know, fill in the blank, right? So when you clarify that and you make enough fundamental changes to the design, even if it is just detailing an existing feature, it still needs approval. So I think cost-wise, we should be covered on a lot.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Chris?
Um, I'll just say I really appreciate, again, both having both of you back here and your general approach, I think, is a breath of fresh air. Um, and I also really think this is a great starting point. This spreadsheet to me seems pretty legible from the get-go. Um, I sort of like the idea, I don't know, Colin, you brought, who brought up? Sort of maybe the idea of like, yeah, trying to do the expense and the funding and the expensing in two different spreadsheets. And I and I like that this thing has, if if forum is sort of a timeline of decision-making in it. And so if we can break things out and try to figure out where we made those decisions or where decisions we made inflated after the fact, um, because maybe we didn't have enough information about what they really cost. So I, yeah, but I I really appreciate what everyone else has said here so far and um, uh, I look forward to, I think, I think this is a good, a really good foundation for us to to really um get going. But I do think the lack of having this clarity is really, does make me feel like we ki- almost went through a charade in the wintertime of doing the whole VE thing because it seems so out of whack with now the numbers we seem to be facing, so. Yeah.
Thanks, Chris. Christina, did you have any feedback?
No, um, just the closeout is, it looks like it's from um October twenty-five, are we on track to that closeout? Read on these.
Thanks, that was a yes for anybody who's listening.
I had not.
Didn't do.
Um.
And we'll get an update on construction schedule on Thursday at our OSE meeting, so it's good.
Uh, and I want to make sure we hear the update on the fundraising. My only comments, other than just share all the board's comments that have been made, um, on the content, owner's contingency log, if you want to just look at that for a second. It makes sense to me the first few rows, and then the one that throws me, this is for future, is final GMP account adjustments, to have that huge number thrown in there. Again, when we're thinking of contingency is things we didn't budget for, things we didn't expect or things that we decided to add along the way. Um, and to have that as both a debit and a credit, I'll just, we don't even have to talk through it. That's super confusing and doesn't allow us to track then, because what we're doing is we're going down this is, it should be all minuses. Right? We're not really adding to our contingency budget.
But we did.
But we did. Well, then go ahead and explain, I don't understand that.
Yeah, well.
And it has a bigger debit than credit, so I don't know how we added to the overall.
Sorry, yeah, and I think I talked about it briefly last time, but we talked about a lot of things last time. And the contingency, right or wrong, when we started this, we used it as a place to keep money and to transfer money for other purposes. So if we identified, we bought this, there's money left over, we put it into contingency. Because where else does it go, right? So that's some of the debts, I'm sorry, some of the credits, right? Same thing with um the
Okay.
So the charade.
That makes sense.
When we did the VE, we took those savings and applied them to contingency.
So that's that's there, that's good to see on two eighteen VE items, hundred and twenty thousand dollars added to contingency.
Oh, your money statement.
Yeah, exactly. But honestly, I think, you know, when this project was started, um, we had different trustees, we had a different finance director. I hear we might be getting a new
Yeah.
finance director. And I don't think there was as much interest in the details and the reporting as there should have been, okay? I mean, um, or that we should have given you. So it just ended up being this default report that nobody understood, but nobody said they didn't understand it, they were just letting it go. And I think there was a lot of, I'm not going to say autonomous and I'm not going to say insulated, it was group decisions made during those transfers in between the original GMP, the first amendment and the second amendment, when we had a lot of money that was uncommitted. And said, okay, we need more here, we're gonna take it here, we've identified savings here, we're gonna take it here, and it just made a mess.
Okay.
Yeah, it made a difficult to understand mess.
I think going forward, what would help is I can understand now why there would be credits in the contingency. I appreciate you helping me understand that, but if it's just a pretty straightforward credits and and debits, like, I still don't understand why the mounted PV array, that big one at the bottom of the owner's contingency log, eight hundred and twenty-six thousand would be listed as a contingency item. I I just don't understand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was an approved change of scope.
Well.
Yeah, okay, maybe I just have to accept the fact that I won't understand this contingency log the way that I've accepted.
I I pulled the AIA change orders to try to understand how we got to eight twenty-six from three ninety-four and sixty-four. And I couldn't make the math work even pulling the actual AIA change orders. So I'm still confused about that number. So it might be helpful to break that down based on, and I I come from this industry, so I really understand this stuff. And that means that I created a change order log and a PCO log to try to understand what was happening. And I also can't account for some of the PCOs and the COs and where they came from. So I was able to put through, put together a lot of it and I couldn't get to eight twenty-six. So I would be interested in understanding how we are, those two things in that description are now eight twenty-six. And I know you mentioned the four fifty-eight and the three fifty-four, but it might be helpful because we are all aware of the three fifty-four to list that as a separate line. I just, it was hard for me and I do this, so.
We will break that line out.
Yeah.
All right, I would like to start moving us along if we can. Um, Eric, did you want to give us a update on the fundraising?
Um, yeah, we we are still, we have about thirty, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in grant asks out right now. Um, I have two meetings uh by the end of this week with two of those granting sources as a secondary interview. So that's a good thing when they want to talk to you about the project, so so that's good. Um, we we did, are going to hire um Malcolm McMichael to um write a core grant for us. That's a two hundred thousand dollar ask to fund our um air source heat pumps. And the the fact that we're not bringing in um any gas to the facility is they, it's a formulaic kind of grant. They figure out how many thermes you're saving and then that's the kind of amount of money that they're able to uh to supply to the project. So I think we're looking pretty good, we're not bringing any, we're not burning any, um, you know, greenhouse gases. So so I think that one will look pretty good. And uh so Malcolm's gonna work on that, I'm just getting too busy to to do that with our summer activities, so. Yeah, and uh, yeah, and that's that's just what I wanted to share, share with you. We do have some uh good uh public outreach happening with the Let's Make a Splash campaign and and some good uh uh marketing that's And and some good uh uh marketing that's going on right now too, to try to try to get us. Get us, if somebody hasn't donated, to see if we can get them, so.
Okay, thanks. Any questions for Eric about that? Okay, okay, thank you all for the report. I mean, it's it's hard to know, I think, what level of detail to be in it as a board with this kind of thing. I think I think about like the Rafta Board and the huge projects that Colin and I are on the Rafta Board. And uh, you know, they've done a thirty-some million dollar um Glenwood Maintenance Facility. And and we never had one single discussion like this. I don't think we reviewed a change order log or looked at contingency or anything like that. I think we're we're in the weeds like this because it was a really hard project to fund. And we had to make a lot of hard funding decisions that nobody else could make, those had to be board-level decisions. And now we're just trying to understand after that, how's it going? And and so when we see a mismatch between the really hard decisions we made and what we're seeing in the reports, we have to make sense of that. So just, if if you all leave and say, why is the board in the weeds on this, that's why. Um, but I also want to acknowledge that we're in the weeds, and I'd love to get us back out of the weeds, once we have really clear reports. And and staff can move forward with those change orders, and you guys can keep the project on track and under budget and not have to keep showing up here and answering all these questions. So that's hopefully the direction we're headed.
Could we assume uh that at first meeting in May, they're back?
I will do that. Watching her daughter graduate call.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Why don't we take a quick five-minute break while we transition? I think we're going to get um some environmental board people, and I think Gwen's here to talk to us about the V caps, the vulnerabilities. Um, assessment of climate change and the future, so let's reconvene about uh seven thirty-one. Okay, are we ready to reconvene here? All right, so whoever's going to work with us, that transition was to go ahead and come up, please, and get settled, get your screen share, whatever you need.
I think I'm all set.
Okay, great. I wasn't sure if Kevin was doing it or Hannah or or just you. So Gwen, why don't you introduce yourself? I don't know if everybody knows you.
Do you want to say anything first?
And um, let's dive right in.
I would say.
Use the mic, please. Make sure it's green on those. You make sure the mic's on, it needs to be green. Thank you.
I um will provide the context and kind of e-board feedback at the end, but we'll let, I I, we haven't heard all of what what Gwen's going to go through. So we'll listen and then provide some context from the e-board meeting last night.
Okay.
Yeah, and I just, I just want to say, just, can you hear me okay if I don't lean into the mic? Okay, because I'm not going to do it like this the whole time. Um, Happy Earth Day. You know, I was just thinking, I'm really grateful to be doing this today. And even more so than that, I'm really grateful that we have this ability to come together locally. And, you know, learn how to govern better and take care of each other better. I'm just very grateful for all of you guys and what you do. So this is.
Glenn, can you just introduce yourself for anybody who might not know?
Yeah, I'm Gwen Garcelon. I'm a local sustainability consultant, regenerative strategies consultant. All of this stuff is emergent right now. This original um report that we're um looking at an update to was done in twenty eighteen. A big year when um we had the fire, a big fire. And we had a pretty extreme drought, and people started to get a wake-up call to. You know, what it what it says in the in the original report, that with a growing population and likely high higher drought frequency in the future. The town has a growing interest in climate resiliency and integrating and understanding of projected impacts of climate change. Into town planning and operations. So that's really what happened here. The original report had a lot of great recommendations. There wasn't um a um an implementation structure. And so this is a great opportunity to, you know, brought these um conversations back up. Look at some of these recommendations, look at what's kind of planning and um operational systems we can put into place. Because um at the State of the River meeting in April, early this month. The trends are pointing toward uh drought potential for this summer. Snowpack is below average, peak snowpack is is twenty-two to three weeks early. Soils were drier going into this winter, and the forecast is for a dry spring. So it's funny, one of the recommendations in the twenty eighteen report was to um do planning at the right time. And this is the right time. So part of, part of the update was to look at the other um towns in Colorado. Who um went through this process with Western Water Assessment. Unfortunately, when the director reached out um to see if he could, to the contacts um the of the folks who had. Participated in the process in these other towns, there were no longer any folks around who had been part of it. So um they pointed me to a couple of other um western towns. Um, and I'll talk a little bit about um what they are doing at the end here. So basically, I sat down with each of the departments and um looked at some of the. Um, the recommendations that were relevant for them. And even some that didn't really have um, you know, recommendations that were relevant for them, like the planning department. Um, and Jared shared that um an update to landscape regulations was something that would be really helpful. To promote more water-wise applications, require drought-resistant plants and trees. Encourage um more community gardens as part of multifamily housing projects. To promote beneficial water use, because it looks like, you know, if we were to. Draw down our water use really substantially, that would be um, you know. The same issue that we keep rolling out again and again, use it or lose it. So if we can transition to beneficial water use, that increases our resiliency on several different fronts. Um, increasing our food production, decentralizing our food supply, um, that would be a good thing. So that was something that kind of showed up in um adding on to the turf buyback program. Is to also be promoting um backyard gardens and just to, you know, to look at things like that going forward. One thing that's um in here that Kevin just alerted me to. Is that these state regulations that go into effect in January first of twenty twenty-six. They they don't require sort of grandfathered places to to go along with that. So that's that's a big deal. At first, I was thinking, oh, wow, we're going to have a big transition to make if we can't um irrigate. You know, medians or shoulders of highways or the roundabout. But that's luckily, or I don't know how we value that, but we won't have to deal with that.
Accurate, Kevin?
Yeah, I missed something there.
So the point of that was, in in the packet materials, it said that we would have to stop. Irrigating those spaces. We do not have to do that. We can't add any more new.
Okay.
Turf, but like, if you're thinking about like the highway corridor, the roundabout, w- we can continue to maintain what we have. We just can't add more.
Okay.
And and that's not a values thing either, I just, that that it's a big difference between. You got this and you can't irrigate it anymore versus don't put any more out there.
And just to maybe put a little bit of a fine point on that, part of this is that there is state regulation that's looking at. Updating landscape codes to be more water-wise. So there's kind of a trigger at the state level that's saying, hey, we need to. Municipalities, counties need to update this. Yes, it's for new, but that's an opportunity where Jared's already saying, hey, we should do this. And there's a state requirement, so there's some kind of synergy there, and just for the board to be aware of that.
Um, Kevin, stay there for a sec, because um, you know, one of the things that came out of talking about um things like water restrictions. Because that was the first, you know, twenty eighteen was kind of the first time we really looked at that seriously. So it's, i- it's probably a good idea at this point. To think about what are those scenarios and s- stream flow levels that will trigger restrictions? So there is kind of an operational plan. And, you know, th- this is also a community values issue as well, because, you know, with the ditch water, there's currently no. Restrictions, it would be voluntary. But to really understand more clearly, like, what would be the mechanism to decide when restrictions need to be activated? And things like, you know, if this should happen, when when would the town decide to reduce river water release into the ditches? What's the communication plan to the town residents? So that whole piece of kind of like really having an operational plan that. That makes sense for um when things get more, when we need to do that.
Can we just pause there? I mean, Kevin, we've talked about water restrictions before and looked at all alternative ways to do it. And there was that effort a few years ago to make them valley-wide, alternating days and all this, and we decided not to do that. But we, I thought we did have pretty clear guidelines for when a watering restriction goes into effect. This makes it sound like that's not the case.
I I think the nuance there is we have very strict um code language that discusses potable water. And when the triggers on potable water.
Okay.
Would be met, you know, whether it's meeting fire flows or or these sorts of things. In two thousand eighteen, we didn't do mandatory restrictions on raw water use. What we did was, being an example, we lowered our use. And then we asked some of the bigger users. I I know we asked R V R, and and we basically all agreed, let's cut back fifty percent from what we would normally do. But it wasn't mandatory, and that's where the. I guess what I would say is, from a supply standpoint, keeping in mind I'm on the supply side of both. That's where it turns into a community values discussion versus is there water discussion? I don't, at this point in time, I think we'll have water. It's just, is there a community value that overrides that in these scenarios?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, Jess.
Just have a quick question. Is, if we restrict the ditch water usage in like town properties? Or for the people who are residents with the town water ditch ditch system? Is there a water right issue if we if we pull back and say we're not going to use as much water? Like, I know that some of these ranches run their water when they don't need it, because they'll lose the rights.
Make sure mic's on, please, Mark, and that you're up.
The short answer, Jess, is not in a in a specific drought scenario over a few weeks or a month. These these water rights considerations go, happen over decades. So if there was the elimination of a hundred acres of irrigated area for two decades, I would have a different answer. But if you're talking about heaving odds or or fifty percent usage or whatever. But if you're talking about heaving odds or, or 50% usage or whatever on a short-term drought management basis, I don't think there's a, a serious concern about losing water rights. Is that into your question?
That's good to know.
Yeah, and moving into Parks and Rec, you know, Eric and I talked about, you know, the scenario that will happen eventually where we'll have to decide what we're going to keep green and what we won't. And if, if townspeople want to water their yards less so that we can keep Sopras Park green, I think these are some things we need to start preparing people for because there are cultural shifts that take a while for people to really integrate. We talked about reaching out to the schools' operations crews to discuss drought protocols so that there's, you know, greater collaboration among all the, you know, the folks working with water in the town. We talked about expanding the number of parks irrigated from the ditch where possible.
Eric, I think, how many, it's almost half of the parks are irrigated by the ditch?
So we do have 38, you know, different irrigation systems in the, in the town system. And 17 of those are utilized ditch water to, to do it. So about, about 46%.
And, and are there parks that would lend themselves to, you know, or if, if we researched it, you know, could we find someone, some that might be able to switch to ditch water? What would that look like?
Yeah, we, we would just need to do a kind of a better assessment of our existing systems. And, and because some of those systems, you know, need to be budgeted for replacement. And so that's when you look at the option when you're doing that, not only putting in smarter systems, you know, that actually don't water if it's raining and those types of different technologies that are, exist out there that these days and with irrigation systems too. So, so that, that'll be just kind of an assessment of a, of, you know, budget assessment of which, which of our systems need replacement and whether or not those could be shifted over to a ditch system if they have access at that location to the ditch water.
6% by number or acreage? Sorry?
Just by, by, by number. Yeah, just by number of systems and parks.
And I just want to say that, that Parks and Rec has been doing a great job of the resiliency of our town parks through the Integrated Weed Management Plan, which was designed to focus on soil health for this purpose so that we had more resilient soils and that were more weed resistant. And at this point, I think it would be a great idea. One of the recommendations is to create educational materials to support residents who don't have to follow the Integrated Weed Management Plan, but to look at, share those protocols with them to create more drought-resistant turf throughout the town. The next piece, which was a big piece, was wildfire mitigation recommendations. A lot of attention on that in the original 2018 plan. And probably one of the biggest wins from 2018 is the emergence of the Roaring Fork Wildfire Collaborative. They are addressing just about 100% of those recommendations that were made in the plan. So that's a, that's a great example of what can be done with a regional collaboration because it doesn't make sense for towns to be, you know, doing this work, you know, in a siloed way. And just to highlight, you know, one of the things that was recommended in the original report was to work with landscape professionals on materials to educate the public on vegetation management during drought conditions. And the Wildfire Collaborative is planning to do this very thing in May. And also, you know, working on a summer campaign that will build on this. So they're really, it's a great resource. And some of these things that occurred to people that would be great to do, you know, of course, are things that they're for sure taking on. Just to note, the Wildfire Collaborative is having a meeting in Carbondale, April 29th, to look at how do we build resilience during more frequent and intense fires? So that's a great resource. And part of this VCAPS update is to do a public education meeting. There was one done originally in 2018 to give people, you know, the overview of what this original report, what came out of it. And so this, this update will do that again. And this will be a great chance to bring the public into, you know, some of these pieces that people are worried about or maybe aren't people, aren't on their radar. And just a great chance for, you know, making this conversation and these resources available to a lot more people in town.
That be a special meeting that we would do? Or would you do that in concert with the Wildfire Collaborative meeting?
It would be a, a meeting unique to the VCAPS update, probably at the Third Street Center, like the first one was. And I was hoping to set a date for that tonight so we can start kind of making that real. And just wanted to check in with you guys about doing it May 28th or 29th. So just to put that in your back pocket, we don't have to decide right now, but. Let's see. So wanted to finish up with what the, what the learning was that came out of the other towns that I was able to do some research on that are similar, have similarities to towns in our valley. One of them that Western Water Assessment pointed me to was Lander, Wyoming. Very similar population to us, similar kind of budget, similar kind of relationship with the surrounding agricultural slash ranching community. The thing that's different there is they, you know, in terms of, of water is they're looking at flood mitigation because of the dynamics of where they are. But very similar kind of things that are emerging there. I spoke with their Assistant Mayor and they have a similar patchwork of nonprofits and grassroots groups. They also use a volunteer group, the Energy and Environment Task Force, much like our E-Board, to advise their city council. They also have the Grassroots Lander Climate Action Network, which began in 2020. So much of this you can see happening post-COVID. It was sort of a, a time when a lot of this work started to come on the scene. Climate action networks and collaboratives. Theirs began in 2020 and, and is mainly focused on emissions reductions projects. The town is doing flood mitigation with the Army Corps, but had to lobby them hard to do anything ecosystem or nature-related. But the town sees that as a real need. The drought work with ranchers is being funded through NRCS and Conservation Districts, much like around here, to increase the health of ranch soils. So the thing that I see that's, that's interesting that come, that's coming out of that is, you know, starting to use these existing groups and, and seeing the need to do ecosystem and nature-related restoration to address all the kinds of water drought issues. The town of Jackson, Wyoming, has created a new staff position, the Ecosystem Stewardship Administrator. That happened in 2022 as ecosystem stewardship was highlighted in their Joint Town and County Comp Plan. It was going to be a joint position of the town and county, but the town was ready sooner. And the gal who is in that position works regionally on an informal basis currently and is covering some decarbonization work, but also creating something called the Ecosystem Health Report to monitor air quality, streams and rivers, wildlife population, landscape and plant life restoration. And this is a collaborative effort of area nonprofits and other groups, water groups. They're paying a professional grant writer to help area nonprofits who can't qualify for funding available only to municipalities. And they're, they're building this sort of needed collaboration in the region like greater compliance with their trout-friendly lawns, which is very similar to efforts we've started here, to water only at dawn and dusk and hazard mitigation planning. So again, I'm seeing this trend toward, it's really place-based because every area has their own sort of network of nonprofits and, and watershed planning that's happened. There are different levels. But they're kind of all, what's, what's bubbling up to the surface is this real need to go beyond decarbonization in climate action plans and really focus on the health of the ecosystem. Because it's, it's the soils and the plant life and the service of the wildlife that, that affects our water cycle so, so significantly. And so keeping our ecosystems functioning and healthy is really the foundation of the work that we're seeing that's, that hasn't been taken on in earnest quite yet, like we've seen with decarbonization efforts. So just to, just to say Eagle County funds a climate action collaborative that's housed under the Walking Mountains Sustainability Center in Eagle. The, this collaborative is funded by all the municipalities who participated in the county's climate action plan. And it, and their funding happens on a sliding scale. And there are other groups like Utilities and Vale Health that's involved with that. In the last three years, the group is working more regionally and they host a Regional Climate Solutions Group, which Pitkin County participates in and Clear also sends a representative. Alice stopped going and she's sending somewhere else because she's so frustrated, you know, with the dynamic, you know. Recently, a resilience and natural climate solutions working group was added to that. So that's another, you know, you can see this trend of we need to work on our natural climate solutions. And, and just to add, the Aspen Global Change Institute helped Eagle County to create a resiliency plan. But again, there's no task force to implement it. So it's that mechanism that we're still kind of looking for in this watershed that's beginning to emerge. I feel like we're getting closer to something that might really work. Alice had actually mentioned exploring if Aspen Valley Land Trust might be a place to house a, a regional coordinator kind of position so that it wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be a, an issue with Garfield County and Eagle and Pitkin. And, you know, in this watershed, we could have a little bit more coordination with really significant efforts like the biodiversity initiative that's currently like not being looked at when we're looking at where to develop or where to, where to protect, you know, really sensitive pieces of our ecosystem. So I think I'll stop there and just.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Gwen. I mean, I might zoom out a little bit. Like, I think there's an assumption that we all have read the original VCAPS report, I think, in this, which is not the case. It wasn't linked in the agenda. But if you go on the town website, I'm happy to see that if you just do a search for VCAP, you can find it. So it's there. So before we talk about this again, I think we'll want to lean in on that. And as Gwen said, that was an effort. It was when Heather Henry was on the board. She actually had a connection to these, this group that was doing this research and they needed a town as sort of a case study. And so we were a, a place that they did this research. And it was a very like data-focused, you know, what would be the implications of all these different scenarios? And, and how would we adjust to that? So it's interesting to hear, like some places it's a flood. Here it's a drought and a fire planning scenario. And it is getting beyond the, the decarbonization focus of our climate action plan, as Gwen said, and into the kind of adaptation and, and preparation. So with that, I mean, I guess where, I want to figure out where we go next. I appreciate the update. I agree that when you look at the original VCAPS report, it's got a big list of potential action steps at the end. Table of actions identified during the workshop, you know, but it doesn't have persons, you know, parties responsible or a timeline or anything like that. And we know that things move better when we have all that. I also want to personally, and maybe other trustees feel differently, but I'd like to limit our scope to the things within our purview as the town of Carbondale. Like, when we're talking about ecosystem restoration and all that, that's all well and good. But that's a regional effort. And I don't, I don't see us leading a regional effort on this right now. Like, I think that the Wildfire Collaborative that you're talking about, that's awesome. That's the kind of regional effort that it'll probably take. But we didn't create that. We participate in that. And I, I think we would participate in something similar. So I'd love to keep our, our discussion now and in future focused on like, how are we going to take on the parts that we have control of and the things about how we water our parks and water restrictions? I mean, it's, on one end, this is like really complex and a lot of stuff. On the other hand, it's pretty straightforward, right? It's what do we do in case of a fire? And what do we do in case of drought? And, and how do we prepare to be more prepared? And I think a lot of our water infrastructure upgrades have moved us in that direction. And so it's sort of what else do we need to do? Hannah Hunt, it looks like you have some thoughts.
Yeah, if I can just kind of frame the context of this, which I appreciate.
Yeah.
Ben, so, yeah, so there was, so I'm Hannah Hunt Wander, outgoing chair of the Environmental Board. But the effort that VCAPS, the planning effort that was done in 2018, the E-Board commissioned an update basically to look at the recommendations. And Gwen was a part of that. Gwen and Seth were a part of that initial effort. So the intent here in terms of kind of what the output is, is to create a usable document that's right-sized for Carbondale that really has the recommendations. Where have we been based on the recommendations that were made in 2018? And what are the priorities for us moving forward? And the intent is that something that's really usable for staff. That's why a lot of the interviews were with town staff and then also for the E-Board to help establish priorities. So just to kind of zoom out in terms of why we're here and what the intent is on this, I can provide some comments that the E-Board gave last night, if that's helpful, just to kind of how we're shaping, how we're wanting to kind of shape the scope of this. So a lot of the work that Gwen has done is helpful to look at what are peer communities doing? What has staff been doing? You know, what are the, what are the kind of efforts that are coming to a head when we're thinking about adaptive planning? So a few just kind of like pretty tactical comments on Gwen's report, ultimately, again, to get to a document that's, you know, usable in the right scale for the town moving forward. The, so some feedback was to prioritize some of these recommendations. There's a lot of different ideas out there, which is really helpful, but adding some kind of commentary about feasibility. Where does this link up with other state mandates like the landscape code, for example? Some considerations of timelines. So just, those are aspects around, there's a lot of recommendations. Let's kind of establish some priorities within those and some kind of thoughts about the, the prioritization. Another aspect is that there is an existing report linked on the website. And the intent is that this update would then be able to feed into that as an appendix. So it's kind of a table of recommendations. Be helpful to have that same table with the update of kind of where we are now. So it's one document that we can use. Be helpful to have that same table with the update of kind of where we are now. So it's one document that we can use moving forward. And then the other aspect is just to comment on kind of what Gwen was saying about there wasn't a clear implementation kind of plan. So, so thinking about kind of the responsibilities of who's doing what or who might be involved with these different recommendations. And then the last piece is just making sure that this can final report has an executive summary that talks about, you know, kind of why did we do this? What are the key big picture takeaways? You know, Gwen, you were sharing some of that about, you know, going beyond decarbonization. We're thinking, you know, a lot of the discussion is more a larger scale around regenerative, you know, it's kind of a big, big large takeaway need for more regional approach. So kind of some of those larger takeaways. But then ultimately moving down into the kind of tactical recommendations that Gwen has identified with staff. So that's, those are some kind of feedback that we are hoping gets infused into this report. And from a process standpoint, and Gwen can speak to this as well, but we had a kind of mini work session with the E board last night. Gwen's hoping to get some additional, you know, kind of share out the process with the trustees tonight. And then is ultimately working on coalescing this into that final report and update to the V caps report that would be an appendix. And then having a share out with the community at some point in time. So the, kind of the next two steps after this are working through a draft report with the E board, which would become a final report and then that, that share out with the community. So just hoping that kind of paints a bigger picture of kind of what's going on.
We needed that. Thank you. So I guess at this point, questions and feedback, and I don't think we have to get into the specific strategies or anything. It sounds like that work's going to be ongoing. I mean, if something jumps out at us that we want to highlight or, or something that seems like something that should be considered that wasn't in here, certainly can bring that up. But otherwise I think it's, is, does it seem like this is on the right track and, and do we feel like that's the right?
Yeah, no, this is very helpful. I was just thinking though, we had a really great session about our water system from staff in terms of what is happening. And it seems like it'd be really helpful to help the larger community understand both the V cap study, what we're thinking might be happening in the future, but actually what we're currently doing right now. And we might not have gotten all these things done, but from what I've learned from staff, we're doing a lot of those things. We might not be doing them fast enough because we only have so much capacity to do those things. But I just started thinking of all the work that Public Works and Water are doing about being able to do roaring fork versus crystal, depending on what's going on.
Yeah.
Our ongoing efforts to make that a much more resilient system. And I know Eric's working to treat, you know, how do we upgrade our systems? We all go around town going, why is that on right now? Why is that water system? And I mean, it's all capacity and money and how we do that. But I think finding a way to share that with everybody. So it's not just, oh, things are going to get really bad and boy, we gotta cut our water use, but we're also doing a lot right now to be more effective with how we use water and be more resilient in case of fire or drought. So as you're thinking about that, don't forget that the town's actually moving quite a ways on a lot of these efforts and make sure that everybody knows about it.
Yeah, that's for sure. The, the intention of the public meeting is to, you know, have Kevin be able to speak to those places of resiliency that have been built into the system and anything that, you know, he'd like to see in the future. But yeah, for people to really understand, you know, the difference between the treated water and the ditch water and, you know, how it all works and what's in place. So yep, for sure.
Great, thanks. Other comments, questions, Chris?
Thank you. Great. I just, gosh, there was something that you were saying that really, now I lost. I guess I, I guess I just, yeah, I like the the, the. Trying to, trying to think about how I was, what I was like specifically trying to say there. I guess kind of like this check in with where we are and, and the informational out session. I think that's kind of cool, maybe to, to some degree, celebrate places where we have made progress and point out that we do have this wildfire collaborative. We did pass a building code that moved our fire codes from 1988 to 2021, I guess. We have done other things around turf replacement. I think obviously the thing that I think when we identified this in our like, in our strategic planning effort last summer, but I think we had ended up at the bottom of the list of all these bazillion things where, but I think we are slowly creeping our way towards some sort of like plan for the ditches or like what kind of an, a little bit more of an intensive look at that. And maybe that is in concert with what's happening in the next round of the Parks and Rec master plan or something, but.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, but both celebrating, but where, where we have gone into like increased level of awareness about a lot of some of these things. But then also that, I think that is a good jumping off point to be like, and these are the things that we are not necessarily making the progress on.
Yeah.
Great. Thanks, Chris.
Absolutely.
Can, can either of you point to sort of low hanging fruit that, that one, we are taking advantage of and you feel pretty confident about and or, or and, and low hanging fruit that, that would be something that folks, individuals maybe could do or, or town could do that, that might not, you know, break the budget or break our, you know, our allotted hours of, of staff time. Are there things that kind of, that, that come up in your discussion of these, these issues that are just sort of like?
Yeah, I mean, I think
easier?
One that, one that stands out that I think I mentioned a little bit about was sharing with residents what is working about the integrated weed management plan and how some of those protocols could work on, on their own properties. You know, that's, that seems like a no brainer that, you know, we could add into the public meeting. And then those materials, you know, would be available for people ongoingly that could be on the town website. And then I think, you know, some of the, you know, we could put together a one pager of, of some of the wins, you know, like the, the river project. You know, that's, I don't know that a lot of people actually really know what happened down there. You know, the people that went to the state of the river gathering heard about it. But you know, that's a, that's a great example of what we can do to make our, our rivers more resilient. That's a landscape restoration project. And we will likely need more of those. You know, as time goes on.
Great. Jess, any feedback? Christina, anything? Erica's camera's off, but give you a chance if you want to unmute.
No, just thanks for continuing to track this, you know, and be on top of this Gwen. Thanks for all your work. And yeah, same to the E board for looking at this topic too.
So yeah, let's just think about next steps. It sounds like you're going to be working with the E board on a draft. And if you're talking about a meeting at the end of May, that's going to happen pretty quickly. Like by then it'll be a, a final draft of the appendix and it'll list the kinds of things we're talking about that these are the things we've already done. And then here's kind of a prioritized list based on, you know, effort and money and stuff involved and impact that we think the town should do next and by department, something like that.
Yep.
Okay. And you don't need a touch point with us between now and then.
Okay.
No, I'm asking.
Oh.
It doesn't sound like there's one plan.
Yeah. Depends. It's up to you guys.
I would just offer from a process standpoint, it sounds like the conversation that's the community public meeting. There may be some feedback in that that wants to get into that final report.
That sounds good.
So my thinking in terms of, you know, knowing that we're helping kind of shape what this final deliverable will be. But I think that, you know, going through here are some of the key recommendations in that public meeting, whoever's a part of that, maybe Kevin's a part of that too. I don't want to speak for Kevin, but he's giving a thumbs up, so that's good. But it may be that that final report happens after that. It just seems like that might be helpful from a standpoint of making sure that any input could get incorporated into that as needed and.
So we'd wait to submit the final report until after the public meeting to incorporate feedback from that meeting?
Right, that we would have a draft before that we're kind of working through.
Yeah.
And then there may be some final.
Feedback.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great. And just from a timeline sequence, knowing that it's April, you know, 22nd right now, that's pretty tight. So just to give you time to focus on that community meeting and then that final, that drafted community meeting and then that report.
Great.
Yeah, I would just encourage you, you know, assume people don't know what V caps is and that they haven't read any of this before. Cause like I said, I think this was written with an assumption that like we are all on the same page about this, but it's the first time that this board has talked about this. And we actually talked a lot a few years ago about renaming V caps. Because it's such a weird uncommon acronym and each, each letter in it is a word that does matter. But I think that's worth reconsider. I feel like we actually decided and we started calling it something else. And now it's back to V caps. And I can't remember what we decided to call it, but it's kind of a climate resiliency plan rather than a climate action plan. And I'm not saying that needs to be the title, but something that resonates with people. Cause if you say it's a V caps workshop, like nobody knows what you're talking about.
Right, or at least a good tagline.
I've been calling it drought, a drought resiliency plan.
Yeah, if it's that, if that's all it is, I mean, I, I think we also, I remember, you know, we had a trustee at the time who is a fly fishing guide for a living and talking about like, what about the economic impacts? But I guess that's drought resiliency too. And I would just hope that by then we do have enough of a draft that it's, like this was, this seemed to be kind of your internal notes. Like this was hard for me to follow because it wasn't, you know, wasn't ready for public consumption yet. And so I hope that by then we've got something that's like tables and charts and like it's ready to go and it's ready for feedback. But that's, that is a pretty quick turnaround in the next four weeks or so.
Okay.
Any other thoughts on next steps? Yeah, Chris?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I just am a little bit of conscious of like, I don't think we've given her a huge amount of budget to like rewrite the whole plan, but I
Yeah.
do think really, yeah. Not being slavish to the old plan for sure. And, and I appreciate your background to sort of of like this did sort of have like an academic lens to it. And you can kind of feel that in the, we go, having gone back through it today, like it sort of picked these specific three scenarios and really dives into those. And it's not necessarily like scanning the whole field and saying, these are all the threats out there.
Right.
What we might do in all of them. It's kind of like tourism, drought, fire or whatever. But I think you can still sort of, it seems like, yeah, you can still narrow it down to mostly it's about water and landscape stuff. And I like climate resilience plan. That sounds fine to me.
That feels a little broad
Okay.
to me. Cause this, this really was focusing on drought. And, and I feel like that, I mean, if we were looking at a climate resiliency plan, that'd be a lot bigger. So I think keeping it to these, you know, drought scenarios, a 2018 type drought or a multi-year severe drought scenario. There's a lot of, there's a lot we can do, you know, that a lot of the recommendations are in here, you know, that, that we can do in the next few years.
Okay. Well, thank you for the update. Thank you for the work. Thanks for picking up a plan that had gotten some dust on it and, and bringing it back up to our attention. Yeah, Kevin?
I wouldn't be me if I didn't point out there's been a lot of positive energy and positive talk tonight about the wildfire collaborative. There is one person in the room that without that, it would not have happened. And he's sitting right over there.
Thanks, Kevin. Shout out. Okay. Anything else on this topic? Do you feel like you have the feedback you need?
So, yeah, we can work with the E board, you know, from here.
Thank you, Hannah Hunt. Anything else line? Okay. Well, we have a couple of weeks without a meeting, so enjoy that. And we'll see everybody, the second meeting in March, uh, May. Second Tuesday in May. That's what I'm trying to say. All right, meeting adjourned.